Welcome to this afternoon's work session. First order of business is if there is there any preliminary items that the Board of Commissioners would like to discuss? All right, well, let's go into our work session items. We will not hear the first one as we have heard that already and she declined to have to redo it. So, let's go into the game changer nation. Chief Markison.
I think it was a mistake. I knew it was on there again because when they asked about it, she said, "All right, I'm ready." So, no skin on her back.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see Mr. Hannah currently in the room yet. I'm texting him now, so if you'd like to move on to the next item, I'll reach out to him.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, next up Parks and Recreation Fees and Changes Policy, Mr. Hodges.
What we want to bring forth to you tonight is the Fees and Charges Policy for the Parks Recreation Department. The last Fees and Charges Policy was brought forth via Resolution 2021-23 back in January of 2021. We, the Parks Recreation Department, reviews the policy every year and we would like to propose several changes to the policy as well as the schedule of fees that was just given to you. So, the Fees and Charges Policy permits the Director to review the fees and charges annually, which what we do. We do a market analysis, like what you see, and this year, this change in the policy focuses on the lower rates for the residents versus the non-residents. And the revisions would be implemented during the, or beginning January of 2024. The schedule of fees is before you and they basically impact three different recreation programs and Troy Stubbs, Assistant Director, will tell you about each of those programs and how it affects us.
We had a PowerPoint, but I think they're getting to it. But I can give you all a few things that we're mainly focusing on. Recreation programs, we're only looking at increasing the fees for the residents $5 per class, so that's one thing we'll be going up on. And for the non-residents, we would increase $25 per class above whatever the proposed rate is for the resident. So, for example, our aquatics, if it was $40 for residents, it would be $65 for non-residents. And fitness, our fitness classes would be $25 for residents and $50 for non-residents. As you can see, we're just increasing $25 above whatever the proposed fee is for the classes, but only increasing the residence fees by $5. Yes, and as we go into our athletic programs, we're looking at the cost of equipment, trophies, our photography, everything has increased. So, we're looking at implementing, increasing our residents by $20 per activity. That would increase, make our non-residents increase 50% more above the residence rate. So, for example, cheerleading would be 175 for residents, for non-residents, be 262. Fifty.
What is, what is it now?
What is, yeah, what is it now?
The cheerleading right now is at a?
170?
155.
155. Because you said $5.
That's for the programs.
Okay, all right.
This is for athletics, would increase $20 per activity. For instance, like our youth soccer, we would increase it to $140 for residents, 210 for non-residents. And for like our track would be $100 for residents, 150 for non-residents. As far as for our membership fees, we would not change any of our daily fees for going into recreation centers. They would remain $3 for residents, $5 for non-residents. But we have had participants wanting to, us to include an extra couple memberships. So, we're looking at, we used to only have one month and three months. We're looking at implementing three, six months and 12 months. So, our new six months residence fee would be $110 for six-month membership and non-residents would be 165. And then for our 12-month, $200 for residents, $300 for non-residents. So, instead of just having our one month and three months, we're looking at implementing a six-month and 12-month as well. And as far as our facility rentals, no proposed increases for residents or non-residents. They would stay the same, continue, the non-residents would continue to pay $25 more than the residents. For example, our GMs, $150 an hour for residents, it would be $175 per hour for non-residents. Do you all have any questions?
Did I hear you all say the last increase was 2021?
No, our, really, I think our last increase was probably back in 2011.
Okay.
The Fees and Charges Policy was just implemented back, with the resolution implemented in '21.
The SPB splash, when we implemented the fees or established?
Talk into Mike, please.
When we established the fee structure for SPB splash, that was in '21, '22.
Yes.
But we didn't really change any of the program fees. The program fees have not been changed.
It's been quite some time. And you said you all did a market analysis on competitive fees throughout the metro area or just?
Metro area and the state, you know, we, GRPA, Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, you know, does different studies and all of the agencies come together and share their program fees to make sure that we're being competitive. And we did, you know, speak with several other agencies around the metro area. We were by far the cheapest. However, now, we're not the cheapest now, but we're in the middle of the pack. There's several counties in the metro area that are a whole lot more expensive than Clayton County, however, we're not, you know, the cheapest.
Well, we also have state-of-the-art facilities as well as programs, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we got to pay for them.
And that, you know, the fee increase really is established more towards the non-residents.
Right. The increase.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I, I hear you all, and this is what I hear from the residents, is that they are paying their tax dollars.
Yep.
We build these facilities with SPOST and it is hard, especially when the basketball, I think it is, the fee, if I heard correctly, that went up, right?
And cheerleading.
The basketball, you talking about the daily fees or the program, basketball program?
Okay, what's the pro, tell me what the program fee is.
The bas, it's on your schedule fees?
No, no, no. What is considered a program? Is that the membership or is that for a specific activity?
Programs would be your baseball, softball, all of your things that are in the parks.
Okay. And those things, that went up, is that correct?
They would go up $20.
But can I say something else?
Because I'm trying to wrap my head around this because I know the kids in, in the parks, I know. Some are having trouble now trying to keep up with, and, and equipment. I think I gave you all a list of equipment for, I think it's football and some of the other activities. And if they can't afford to buy the activities, I mean, the pads and helmets and things, and then we're going to go up on the fee for them to play, I think we're discouraging our kids from participating in these activities. I mean, and I, I hear what you all are saying, that things are going up and all, but is our budget that bad with Parks and Recs that we need to increase? I mean, why are we increasing?
As a, basically, we never recover 100% of our cost. Say for instance, the ba, the football, you know, if we were to charge each participant, the, the cost of the program is well into the $300, $400 per child. We only charge $150 per child. We're going up $20 per child to, to 170, by far, you know, one of the cheapest around. It does not cover the entire cost of the program. That is, you know, supplemented by our budget. The out-of-county fee, of course, is going up, you know, 50%.
A lot of our families have a kid that may play with a six-year-old and they may have another kid that plays with a 12-year-old.
Right.
Another kid that's playing with whatever. So, that's three or four kids. So, we going up $20 per kid?
Correct. We are also, you know, upping our scholarship program. Put it this way, if any child has a financial difficulty to, for paying for any of their registration fees, all the way down to our daily fees, we do, we don't turn anybody away. If somebody comes to us and says, "Hey, I can't afford football," oh, sure, come on in. We're going to, we're going to make it work for that child.
For county residents.
For county residents, correct.
What does the money go towards?
Second?
Like the, per child?
Yeah.
Even the fees at, at current rate, what do we use that money for? Do we buy uniforms, equipment?
To the general fund.
Just general fund, my son.
Correct.
General?
Goes back to the general fund.
About a minute, it's the, for the trophies, umpires.
Okay, it goes for some operational costs and expenditures for costs.
Everybody gets a trophy.
And uniforms.
Yeah, they don't start with that. My day, we didn't do that. My day, you, never mind.
What steps have we made to speak with the public to make sure that these fees are affordable? Because regardless of what we think, we still have families in Clayton County who are struggling. And our taxes are high, higher than they've ever been before. And even people who are in middle-class homes will have a hard time trying to pay these fees. So, what have we done just to address the public to see how they feel about these fees as well? Because I know, you know, that the increases are going to affect a lot of our families. Like you said, you do help them out, more or less, but again, what have you all done?
In every program and sport, we have a survey that goes out to the parents. We have a mid-season survey and an end-of-the-season survey. Those, the fees, you know, there's three or four different question that ask the question. Do you feel the fees are reasonable? Would you support a, an additional fee? We have had nothing but good support from these surveys and that's one of the things that, you know, we, how we came up with, along with the market analysis of the $20.
Can you provide the Board a copy of those surveys because I'd like to see them?
Certainly, yeah.
And also, I wanted to ask you, with these increased fees not only affecting our residents, have you all thought of some alternative ways that we can, because I'm just trying to see how these fees, how do, how are they going to help our program? If we increase these fees, what are you all going to use them for as far as helping our programs and helping our Parks and Recs? Because we do have great Parks and Recs, but we still have, we still need more in the county. We don't have enough in each district and we need, we need to provide more for our citizens. So, how are these fees going to help as far as getting what we need as a county?
Well, I mean, you know, the, the general fund, you know, the, the revenue portion goes back to the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's going to help that aspect of the money that we bring in.
But I need a breakdown, Ms., I need a breakdown. I need to see, what are we going to use this for? What parks? How are we going to improve our parks, especially the ones in District 1, 2, 3, and 4? I want to see how, how that's going to help our parks as well.
Well, we, we're going to ask for a pretty big increase in our budget and that would be up to you guys to approve in FY '25, in the expenditure portion.
Commissioner? Can we see a comparison of what was spent this past year, this year and the proposed?
Yes.
Because you, you saying it's going back to the budget? The increase is going to the?
General.
No, the general fund, not the budget. It's going back to the general fund.
Okay, what we going to do with it in the general?
Well, when we set the budget at the beginning of the year, when we set Parks and Recreation budget, we'll have additional funding.
So, they going to pay the taxes?
Pay what taxes?
The citizens.
They're going to pay the taxes and then they going to pay?
Exactly.
Okay, come on.
Chairman, Commissioners, good seeing you all this afternoon. Director Hodges and Assistant Director Stubbs, the primary reason for some of the tax, the actual revenue increases has a lot to do with inflation as it pertains to some of the costs
associated with providing the services. Afficiating fees have gone up, the, the cost of material and goods have gone up, uniforms have gone up. And opposed to oftentimes always passing it off to the budget, you try to pass it off to the user. Both Commissioner Hamrick and Commissioner Anderson brought up a good point. If you already have an affordability issue, why would you continue to do that, do as such? As Director Hodges alluded to, we do have scholarship programs. If it comes an affordability issue through the TANF program based upon the need, if individual needs to have a scholarship put in place, Parks and Recreation in turn tries to ensure that, they try to take care of that cost difference. So, using as an example, if the base price for athletic programs is $150 and for whatever reason, based upon the number of kids they have in the program, they may be able to provide a scholarship for the cost difference. So, if the costs go up by $20 in the program, that scholarship can take care of the cost differential, so therefore, they'll still be at the base price, but we still are covering that expense that goes in with inflation because of the programs and services. And so, in some instances, we, again, we have not had a true cost increase for our programs and services since I left Parks and Recreation in 2011. So, we're looking at close to a 12-year period of time where there has not been a, a cost increase. And I think this is a nominal way of looking at the, the increase in spite of the fact that we recognize we don't want to pass all this cost all to our citizens.
You know, we get these reports, people who come here and they say, you know, Clayton County income, we're in the lowest bracket out. Citizens only make, what, 40, is it 30-some thousand?
30 to 40,000.
Yeah, it's about, household median income is around 41,000, 42,000. Yes, ma'am.
And then we compare, we're comparing these fees to these other counties that the income is much higher. Is higher. So, I, I'm just trying to see how, I'm going to have to answer.
Yes, ma'am. You're right.
My constituents, I'm at the rec centers, I'm at the, the centers and stuff, and these parents are going to come to me because first of all, the worker's going to say, you know, you need to talk to your commissioner.
Yep. And they going to call my phone.
And how am I going to justify? So, just tell me something.
Well, what we can do, I think you both have asked for empirical data. You want to see the comparison of what those fees and rates are and Director Hodges have communicated that he'll have that information. So, before we put it on an agenda for the Board to ratify any fees, let's get you all the empirical data so you can see the comparison of the other municipalities and then from there, we can make a determination on how we move forward.
And not just, excuse me, sir, not just the municipalities, I want to know what our citizens have said because we need to survey citizens in that empirical data.
Got it.
So, we will know what they are saying.
Let's make sure that market analysis is included in.
And I, I would hope that we can work something out for the families that have three.
Four kids.
And those kids are lame.
The TANF program, the TANF program we utilize from the Department of Children's Services, it looks at a sliding fee. So, depending upon the number of kids you have in the program determines your scholarship amount.
So, it wouldn't be an increase of $20 per kid?
Yes, ma'am, not necessarily. That would determine the scholarship amount that Parks and Recreation could provide depending upon the number of kids they have in the program.
But Mr. Stanford, I have some parents that are not on TANF and they have four and five kids. And so, what would we do for those parents?
We, well, what?
Apply personally.
Yeah. So, they still apply for the scholarship. The individuals that are on a need basis are provided the scholarship first and there's still funding in place. They still try to utilize that program to give those individuals, even though they may not qualify initially for the TANF program.
Okay, who's, who's going to explain this to the parents?
Exactly.
To whoever this increase may. Are we going to have signs up? Are we going to have, I guess, like at, at the parks, you got your, what are you talking, I guess, your directors and all and your coaches and all.
We have email, we have emails. I mean, it would be an email blast.
Yes, send it in, in the mic.
Yeah, no, we have, we would have all the, our database has every email of every participant we've ever had the last five or six years. So, it would be an email blast and a media outlets would know that we are increasing. All of our media, in-house media outlets would know, in our recreation centers, in our programming, on our websites, things like that, with this new increase and our fees would be posted.
And with the increase in the fees, because we do have parents that can support the, the increase in the fees, but that overage at $20 extra can be set up for a scholarship fund for those who are less fortunate and not able to really afford the increase.
We are able to get every per, sorry.
But there has to be a funding mechanism for that. And if, and if those families who are able to pay the fees, then the extra money can be set aside by this Board to say, "We want this money to be set aside for scholarships for those who are a little less fortunate."
Certainly. That could be done. We can.
And even with the non-residents, the increase in the non-residents.
I know you all say that.
I was just about to say it. It don't work like that, y'all.
Since 2011. I don't want us to just, okay, we haven't had an increase, let's do an increase.
Yep.
Just to be doing it. Is there a need, does the budget say that, you know, we need more money for X, Y, Z?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I don't want it just to be going up just to be going up because we haven't gone up in.
Well, a good example, good example that Director Hodges, this last year, you know, the access revenue that went up getting from the movie proceeds. This Board gave permission for that money to be repurposed and put back into Parks and Recreation to take on capital needs. The challenge is, is that a lot of times the money goes to the capital needs, it doesn't go to the program and needs for the citizens. So, this is a way by which you can utilize those revenues that, with increasing fees to take care of programmatic needs of the community. Now, we can do the same with the movies, again, if money is coming in opposed to going to the capital needs of the department.
What do they?
We had the movies that were, were being filmed in the different areas, we had a revenue coming in.
Oh, you mean for the, uh, for the rec to pay for whatever?
When they were utilizing either county facilities or park facilities, this Board gave the opportunity for that money to be repurposed back into Parks and Recu, by Parks and Recreation for capital needs in the department.
When we had the movies out there at, um.
So, when Netflix came to us and needed different things.
Remember I asked for that money to go back?
We re.
Like 45 hours?
What money they going to pay?
The money, yes, they do. When, when, when a production company films in Clayton County, they pay us a fee.
I'm talking about our movies that we have.
She's talking about movies in the park.
Major productions.
Okay.
Not the movies in the park. Yeah, yeah.
I did say.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we've been bragging for the last couple of years that, oh my God, the Splash, Splash Water Park is doing well. So, where does that money go? Does that go to a different budget or whatever?
It goes to balance the overall county's budget. So, to what Troy was saying earlier, the revenue that's coming in right now is not, we say what we call a rec fund. So, money that came in from that respective department, if you had an overage, that money can be put back into that department. Right now, the funding from the fees and charges that are coming in with court fees, speeding tickets, all that money, the revenue comes in, is going to balance the overall budget for the county. So, the money that they have in the overage for the water park is balancing the overall county's budget, not going back to redirect funding back.
Why can't we go back to Parks and Recs?
It can. It can.
That makes sense.
That's a board decision.
Yeah, I'm just saying, let's, let's just try that.
Try that, the rather than increasing.
Let's go up $20.
We're doing that now.
What, now?
That money that's, that's recovered from fees from the Splash Park has gone back to the general fund, fund balance rather, and then we set the budget according to the funds that we have recovered.
Okay, I hear you. But I'm saying, instead of putting it all back to the general fund, why can't we, before we put it all to the general fund, use a portion for Parks and Recs?
We hear you loud and clear, Commissioner, and that.
If Parks and Rec is the other one that's accruing those funds.
Just increase the budget and be done with it.
Well, I think, I think the first order, and I think, I think the CFO would, would, would agree with me on this. We certainly want to make sure that we hit the threshold of covering the overall county's budget and then we have an overage, then to your point, that money can be redirected back to Parks and Recreation, based upon that.
Back to the people.
Our kids.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to say, again, show us the data. I want to hear what the parents are saying as far as the increases because, again, I want to see the data. Data, data talks.
Yes, ma'am.
And we look at, and, and, again, we just don't want to put increases on the citizens right now. Again, things are too high. There are things that we're trying to do to improve our parks as well. So, please just bring us the data. And I think that'll, you know, rest our minds and we can work it out from there.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hammer.
No, I'm, I think.
No, I was going to say, we'll make sure that we provide that, that data and if the recommendation is better that we don't have an increase, it would be a win-win. We can take about, talk about repurposing that money, going back to Parks and Recreation, don't have an increase. And if ultimately, there's enough money to do, to do that, then I'm sure Director Hodges and Assistant Director sees that as a value to continue to pay those expenses.
Yeah, I don't need the data. I can already tell you what my parents are going to say.
I, I can tell you too, but that's what I said.
I don't need it.
But, again.
I, I just hope we consider, you know, at least consider before we put all that back into the general fund, let's, you know, see what that percentage is and use a percentage for Parks and Recs.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
Commissioner Anderson, just to clarify, I'm going to get you the, all the survey results and the comparison county-wide for the different programs.
Yeah, the county-wide and do you have comparisons, comparisons of other programs? Like, let's, I say, even if we're comparing with Gwinnett, again, we know that, you know, their tax bracket is higher in Gwinnett, so more or less, just, let's look at, give us some comparisons of some counties.
Yeah.
That's, that has the same income base level as ours.
But you, but still with focusing on the increase from residents and non-residents, even if we kept the price the same as for the residents, still increasing the non-residents more than $10 than where we're at, we would still look at increasing non-residents.
We're going to look at it across the board.
We could look at, right.
Yeah, across the board. Yeah, both.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Human Resources, Ms. Ambles.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. I would like to introduce the HR team that I have with me today. I have Mr. Edward Lance, Ms. Angela Woods, Ms. Carol Lowe, and Ms. Noi Safantaphong. And this is actually Noi's first time at a Board of Commissioners meeting. Noi has about 15 years of service with Clayton County, but this is her first time. She's been with us for quite a while, but this is her first time. She, she reluctantly agreed to come on, but no, she's, she's happy to be here. Board, I have two presentations tonight and I'm going to make them brief. Commissioner Dr. Anderson, you paved the way for me when you said data speaks. I got you, you know I got you. But we'll, we have two. The first one is I'll go through very briefly because you all will see this again next week as LR 8010. So, I'm going to go through this very briefly. What we are requesting the Board's consideration of converting one of our part-time clerks within the Human Resources Department to a full-time Human Resources Specialist Senior at a grade 16, Step 8, total compensation $59,363. We are requesting to reduce our part-time budget at $19,500 to cover the, to help mitigate some of the cost, so it will be an annual cost of $39,863. This particular position is within our Employee Relations, Applicant Service, and Professional Development and Training Division. Current structure, we have Ryan Shaw. He leads this division as the Human Resources Officer. Ryan would have been here today, but he had a family emergency. We also have within his division, Human Resources Analyst, a Human Resources Specialist Senior, as well as a part-time Human Resources Clerk, the one that I am requesting to convert. One significant duty is that this person serves as the face and voice of the Human Resources Department. This person actually manages the front desk, which was actually my very first job when I transferred from PD to HR. Budget 24, Human Resources did request a full-time position. It wasn't approved at the time. My plan was to bring that request back mid-budget year. Here is a history of the part-time clerk. The position was, was held almost four years by a previous incumbent, Ms. Suzie. She did a great job. She was already retired and she retired full-time. We then hired Ms. Angelica. Ms. Angelica is now a full-time student at Georgia State. So, the goal for this position, when you think of the criticality of it, is to hire someone who is looking for a career with Clayton County. Duties of the part-time HR clerk, a detailed list of the responsibilities has been provided to the Board and it is reflected in LR 8010 for the citizen and the for the citizen and the Boards to review. Uh, in the absence of our part-time clerk, we have to use full-time team members. They have to be pulled in to assist, because there are just some duties of this position that we cannot let go unmanned for any amount of time. In other words, I don't want anyone calling the Board of Commissioners or COO Stamford, DCOO Murkison, saying that they are having a hard time getting through to Human Resources. So the next, next step is we have placed this on the agenda for your consideration at the September nineteenth meeting. And once again, I thank the Board for everything that you all do for us.
Any questions or reference to this?
Now, what's the purpose?
Ma'am.
What's the purpose of making the change?
We, we have a part-time Human Resources Clerk who is manning the front, uh, our front office and doing a whole lot of other duties that I've detailed in LR eighty-ten. And what we, what we want to do based on the history of what we've seen, we've had the, the retired, uh, person, Ms. Suzie. She sat in that position for four years. She did a great job for us, but she finally retired full-time. We then hired, uh, Ms. An.
I mean, she retired.
No, she retired full-time. She said, you know, I'm, I've, yeah, I've, yeah, she's, she decided to retire, which is why she left the position. And then we hired another, um, person to handle that, the duties, and she is now a full-time student. So instead of continuing to hire part-time people for the position, we want to hire someone who's full-time and is actually looking for a career with the county. And we do, like I said earlier, we have outlined, uh, the duties of this position for the Board's consideration and review.
So the part-time position goes away and you're gonna add a full-time?
Yes, yes, sir. Mm-hmm, reducing the part-time budget by nineteen five hundred to help cover the cost.
And that, that's gonna sustain you? You're not gonna come back? Should this be approved and say, I need nineteen thousand of part-time money again?
Not part-time money, but we may, more than likely, budget year twenty-five, we'll come back with our request for another full-time person.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Let's roll to the next.
All right, thank you. Board, I do want to thank you all for the opportunity to present the results of our twenty-twenty-three state interview survey. As a matter of fact, one of our citizens, Mr. Gooden, had a question for me, and I told him, hold your horses. You're gonna get some information in just a second. Thank you, Mr. Gooden. Um, our employee population is two thousand nine hundred. This year, we had eight hundred and seventy-four employees to participate in our state interview. I was so hoping for a thousand. We almost got, got there, but we'll, we'll do that next year. Uh, even though we had the eight hundred and seventy-four, that represents a sixty-four percent increase in the number of participants we had last year. So our employees, they are beginning to speak up. We tell them, your workplace, your voice, be heard, uh, and they are definitely beginning to, uh, speak up. The state interview is quite different from the exit interview, and the exit interviews that Mr. Shaw team, uh, conducts, we're looking at reasons why the employees leave the county. With the stay interviews, we're looking at why you stay. We want to know why you stay, what your concerns are, so that we can address those to improve our, uh, retention. I want to share with the Board, Human Resources' mission. Our mission is to serve as a data-driven, strategic, collaborative, trusted partner, and a part of that is we definitely want to be knowledgeable and results-driven. As a matter of fact, when it comes to knowledgeable, I have a self-imposed annual training, um, number of hours that I complete. And for my leaders, they have to complete twenty-five hours of training annually as part of their performance evaluation. So we take what we do very seriously. I also want to position Clayton County as an employer of choice. I want people to want to come to work for the county, and I want them to, want to stay, uh, when they get here. To ensure that HR is meeting the needs of our internal, uh, customers, we have implemented a complaint line. We want to be held accountable, so we do have an internal complaint line for our leadership and our HR partners, so that if they have any issues, they can use that, uh, complaint line to let us know that we need to get on the ball. I'm happy to say so far, we haven't received any complaints yet. So one of the questions, and I want to say this, we're going to, uh, post the interview, the stay interview, the entire state interview on our website and on the Buzz. What I'm sharing with you all tonight is just snippets of some components of the, um, interview. So one of the questions we ask our employees is, how long have you worked for Clayton County? Very interesting. When you look at the results there, you'll see that the majority of our employees who participated have been here for, from between one and five years, with the highest category in the one and two-year, uh, category at over thirty-five, right at thirty-five percent. But collectively, those who have been here from one to five years, they made up over fifty percent of the, um, of the participants. That is very significant for two reasons. Number one, they are untainted by time. So they are really speaking primarily from the experiences that they have had thus far. Also, it's, it's important for us to hear from our newer employees, because we haven't gotten our return on our investment yet. Our industry states that it takes about three years before we begin to see an investment on our, uh, employees. So it is critical, we want to hear from everybody, but it is critical that we hear from those newer employees to know what they are thinking and what their concerns are. One of the things I want to share with the Board is the last data we pulled as it relates to police officer. Officers show that our police officers are more likely to leave in the first and second year. If we can get them to stay to year three, generally, they tend to be here for a while. But over fifty percent, or right at fifty percent of the voluntary resignation from our police officers happened within their first to second year of, uh, employment with Clayton County. Another question we asked was, when was the last time you thought about leaving the county? And if you look at the results, you'll see that never, right at thirty percent, which was good to see, and ongoing, about maybe twenty-two, uh, percent. It's interesting that the highest categories are never and, uh, ongoing. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna refer back to this in another question in just a few minutes that we asked. We also asked, well, what prompted you to think about leaving the county? And as you can see, over fifty-one, over fifty percent said compensation, uh, benefits and job-related, well, compensation, job-related factors, and leadership are the top three categories as to why employees stated, uh, that they considered leaving the county. I want to brief, speak briefly about compensation, because you all as a Board deserve applause, because you have done a lot of things. Uh, one of the things that we have coming up is our workforce planning study that's going to look at compensation, uh, in its totality for the county. We're working with, uh, Ms. Carol Rogers and her team. We have our first meeting for the RFP next week. Uh, you all did that. You've also, uh, approved our, uh, premium discount program that I'm very proud of, that's going to allow our employees to keep at least fifty dollars per month in their pocket. Most significantly, although we had an eleven percent increase in medical, the Board absorbed that cost so that our employees would not have to see it. That is significant, and we appreciate what you all are doing with the consistencies and the merit increases and so forth. So we're making some, uh, effort. As it relates to leadership, uh, that employee-employer relation is the most important relationship in the workplace. As a result of the last state interview, Mr. Ryan Shaw, we have started a program where every employee who is promoted in a leadership role here at the county has to go through a leadership, uh, class, so that they will be better prepared, um, to, to lead and manage, because the skills of leadership vastly different from the skills, uh, of an employee. One of the questions that we ask, are you actively seeking employment elsewhere? You'll see that seventy-seven percent said no, whereas twenty-three percent said yes. So going back to the question that we asked earlier, have you thought about leaving Clayton County? There's a big difference between thinking about it and being about it. So what this says to me is that we have some who are thinking about it, but they're not being about it. There's a difference between actively searching and passively searching. So we may have employees who are, you know, kind of fed up in the moment, but they still continue to stay with us in the long haul, so that is very significant. Seventy-seven percent said, no, I am not seeking, uh, employment elsewhere. This is another very important question that we asked, because family and friends are at our hearts. So we did ask the question, would you refer Clayton County to your family and friends? Sixty-seven percent said yes, whereas thirty-three percent said no. For the ones who said no, they cited, um, the lack of opportunity to advance, uh, instability in the workplace. So we have a lot of qualitative data that goes with the quantitative that I'm sharing that will be posted on our website and the Buzz. And it's important to realize too, that those who are not actively seeking at this point, you know, they could be, which is important to understand what their concerns are. We asked the question, why did you apply with employment with Clayton County? You'll see by far, location, um, is the, uh, highest categories, followed by benefits and retirement. We do have a great retirement plan here at Clayton County. Uh, benefits with the Board's assistance, we are continuing to advance in that area as well. The areas of improvement is image, uh, community, as well as compensation. What we find in, uh, previous surveys is that our employees, they take pride in serving their community. And we do have a lot of requests for partnership, especially on the wellness side. We've partnered with the school system for our interns, and we brought in, I think it's about five or six interns thus far. So we are making progress in a lot of different things. Now, it's not easy putting yourself out there, right? It's not. But in order to become better, you have to get information, so it wasn't easy. I would like to say to the Board that we have one hundred percent across the board when it comes to rating your HR department. Uh, considering the nature of what HR does, I am very proud of my team, and I am proud of the scores that we received and the feedback. We take the feedback at heart. But we ask our employees to rate your human resources in regards to responsiveness, how fair we are, trustworthy, knowledgeable, available in service. And the data that's in white is the overall percentage. The data that's in red is mean that we're meeting or exceeding. So in responsiveness overall, the employees felt that we was ninety-one percent responsive, and seventy-one percent of the ninety-one felt that we exceeded their expectations in that. So overall, Human Resources has a ninety-two percent favorable rating, and I'm once again very proud of my team. It's not me, it's my team. We also asked to rate Clayton County as an employer overall, and you'll see the results there. Uh, we did pretty good. We really did from, uh, and, and once again, this is not HR speaking. These, these are our employees' thoughts, concerns, insights, feedback. So as an employer, Clayton County has a ninety percent favorable rate, which I think is very, is very good. All right, let's see what else we have. So Human Resources perspective, we are, um, gearing up for that workforce compensation study. I'll go ahead and let the Board know, whatever the recommendations are from the vendor working with HR. We will be presenting a mid-budget, uh, recommendation proposal for that. Uh, the premium discount, uh, program is gonna allow our employees to keep fifty dollars per month in their pockets. Uh, we are working hard to continue to improve the supervisor-employee relationships. One of the things that HR would like to see is to promote learning, cross-training, leadership programs, official mentorship, career path, and that's one of the things that we're gonna be tasking, uh, the vendor with in our, uh, study is to look for a career path. Uh, I think we can do a better job with imaging. I know HR, we're gonna update our webpage. We're working with IT for a new onboarding platform and storytelling, just continuing to tell what it is that we do well, because there are a lot of good things that are happening here in Clayton County. And you all are at the center of it for HR, 'cause we can't do anything without the Board's, uh, support. We do have a lot of things that's going on with wellness. Uh, we had planned an employee well, gratitude day. This is my first time speaking about it publicly. We wanted that to happen October twenty-seventh, but due to unforeseen circumstances, we are going to delay it until, uh, May, but we have a lot of good things that are going to be coming up, a lot of partnerships. Uh, and as a matter of fact, Mr. Edward Lance, um, he has, uh, something that he wants to give to the Board. We ordered, uh, some hydro jugs that we're gonna be giving to our employees, and, uh, we wanted to present one, uh, to the, to the Board, and we'll make sure that the other members get theirs as well.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
You can just leave it right there. Thank you.
And take out.
All right, Eddie, yeah, take one out and showcase it like Van Wild. Turn around, show it to the audience.
And the sleeve to go, and the sleeve to go with it, this is to promote, uh, this is to promote, uh, hydration.
That's great.
And let me.
Enough and that for the other Commissioners as well.
And let me say this, you and your team has done a great job, and we, especially in the wellness area. A lot of employees are on board, and I see them walking and running and participating in a lot of the, the initiatives out in the community, and I really appreciate all that y'all are doing.
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate you all too.
Yes, yes, give him a round of applause. Hold on a second, I think that's, uh.
Yeah, one question. Um, you, I know, I just want to also say thank you, because last year when you stood up here, one of the questions that I asked is, how do we get our employees to come and participate in this survey? And a sixty-four percent increase is a great increase. I just want to say again, let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you.
But that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, I just, um, based on that qualitative data, I just wanted to ask you one question. Were there any notable statements, um, that are responses from our employees, you know, that they said, what were the reasons why they would stay, or a top three reasons why they would want to stay, their perceptions or opinions?
Yes, ma'am. And as a matter of fact, uh, my, I, Ryan Shaw, Ms. Noi, and Edward, we were the ones in HR who analyzed, uh, the data. So we saw a lot of different things. We saw, uh, just a fabulous place to work. We saw, um, that they really, one thing about our employees, they love their coworkers. They really, really do. Uh, and having good coworkers is always, uh, a plus. Uh, and we're gonna have some, I think I have some of the qualitative data with me to just kind of show you all. And we're gonna get, we're gonna get it posted, but this is just some of, just one pack that we had to go through. So there's a lot of different statements. I do, I'm glad you said that, Commissioner, because Ms. Yolanda, who is our custodian, and I told her that I was gonna do this, um, she made the statement that we see her. Her previous employer, she said, did not talk to her, did not see her, but, and she provides services to the Board of Commissioners to this building, as well as the building as H, in HR building. And she said to me that, you all see me. She said, my last employer, I won't name the employer, but a big organization, she, she just felt like a number there. But she said, people talk to her, let her know how they, how much they appreciate her. When you think of the role of a custodian, that's a very important position. Very important. Uh, so there was a lot of different comments that was made, some positive, some negative. One of the comments, when we asked about HR. One of the comments when we asked about HR, Ms. Noe tickled me because about three or four times, we saw the HR director. And I'm like, what have I done? But there's a lot of different comments and we're going to put it out there on the website for our employees and citizens to see as well.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go back to Game Changer Nation. Chief Murvis. That close.
Thank you Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just kind of wanted to bring forth a little bit different spin on kind of the parks and rec conversation. I didn't realize they would be on this agenda, so I guess this, this may be a good thing or, or not, we're going to find out. But as we start talking about fees and stuff, we need to start looking for ways to generate additional revenue. So to Commissioner Hambrick's point and Commissioner Anderson's point, we can put money back into our Parks and Recreation Department that doesn't necessarily have to come from our taxpayers. So as we consistently go out and look for public-private partnerships to be able to drive that type of external revenue source, Game Changer was brought to us and this is kind of what these gentlemen specialize in. So we thought there would be some value in letting them come to the board and talk briefly about kind of what they do and how they help communities build revenue sources outside to help support the local Parks and Recreation Departments that, that we currently have and then start to offer additional services that we may historically have not. Then if there's something the board sees value in, then we can certainly explore it further. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Rob Hannah, who's the CEO of Game Changer and let him walk you through the presentation. Thanks Rob.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. In the essence of time, I'm going to stay with the script that I have here.
We won't let you get off, I promise you.
So my company, Game Changer Nation, is in the business of providing resources, consulting and advice to public and private entities in the sports world. I've been doing this for about twenty years. After retiring as a professional athlete, I wasn't sure what I wanted to do, but I did know, I spent many years training and developing myself and I did have great experience from sport that led me from being a guy who didn't know what I wanted to do in my life, a kid that didn't know what to, traveling the world, seeing twenty-three countries, you know, and, and having a, you know, chance to get educated and go to college and win national championships. It brought so much to my life that I wanted to be able to take my experience and give it back to young people. And so that's where I got started with Game Changer Nation. One of the passions that we have is creating places where kids and families gather and play and compete, socialize and have fun. We believe in the power of sports and wellness and recreation and how it positively changes lives and builds healthy communities. Again, growing up, I had a family that were, we were very, family was very educated, father was an air traffic controller, and we bounced around as we grew up. And I realized that whenever we purchased a home near a sports field or gyms, I always had something to do and it was always positive. And those moves where I didn't have that, I tended to get in more trouble. And so I realized the power of, if you have recreation and sports where kids are, you're going to give them positive outlet to, to build skills and, and channel their energy. And so I really, really love the fact that we, we are able to help kids in our organization. What, who we, who we serve and what we do. For young athletes, we provide opportunities to play, train, compete and recover. And for adults, we give them ways to engage and be social and be in an environment where they can channel their stress and energy through wellness programs. With businesses and municipalities, we help them reimagine, rebuild and reprogram their sports facility and turn them into more attractive destinations for competitions and events. We also help design and construct championship level facilities that help them to drive new revenue, make an economic impact in the communities where the, the facilities are and return, give a healthy return on the investment that was made with those constructed facilities. Some of the work that we've done in the past in the areas of public and private partnerships, I'll give you some examples. We work with the city of Houston and we helped them build Houston Amateur Sports Park, which was a, a concept where the city wanted to provide land and build out a place for expanded parks and recs, but they also wanted to do a partnership with the local soccer organization, the MLS soccer organization, the Houston Dynamo. And so the Dynamo needed a training center, they needed sports medicine in that center. So we created a partnership with our company and the Dynamo and Houston's Methodist Hospital to put a center of sports medicine in that building. And so that project basically paid for itself and it was self-funded and self-operated and it helped the community. Another partnership that we did with the city was with Swanee Sports Academy. Swanee's in Gwinnett County. Back then, we, in two thousand, we built this facility because of the idea that people were spending tons of money driving down and flying into Disney's World of Sports and they needed a less expensive solution to achieve the same result. And so when people were going to Disney, they were paying for the parks, paying for hotels, paying for the food, and then they would have a competition and they would basically be like, oh, we just, you know, we're wired, we have no money for the rest of the year. So our idea was to create a alternative that gave people a similar experience that was convenient and less cumbersome on their, on their travel. And, and so Swanee Sports Academy ended up being a huge success. We ended up bringing in national and regional events. We impacted the local economy, the hotels, the restaurants and so on and so forth. And the parents and the athletes were happy because it still served the same purpose. It helped their athletes get recruited, get seen and have the ability to compete at a very high level. Some of the programming that we've been able to assist with, we worked with Chris Paul, their CP3 camps. Chris Paul is an NBA player, he's very successful. He's built a national and international exposure camp for young people that want to play basketball. And Chris was looking for a way to give kids a, a recruitable experience beyond just the eye test. So if you looked at an athlete, you see he's six foot seven and he's super athletic, you say, oh, he's a great player. But then what about the five foot eleven kid that maybe not be able to jump as high? They wanted us to come in and give them an alternative way to be able to get information from the kid's time on the court that gave them, brought a little bit more value to the experience. So we created an objective data platform that basically was a combine test. We implemented, so we, we would check the kid's speed, we checked the kid's vertical jump, we checked their lateral movement, we would see what percentages they shot and we would package that data with the eye test data. So subjective data and objective data, we packaged it and it brought a lot of value to the experience with Chris Paul and he was able to scale his program beyond the, the physical location in North Carolina and he scaled it out over six different cities in the United States using that technology. So we also worked with Steph Curry, Todd Francis C A football camp. We worked with Competitive Ed Sports, which is the world leader in NFL combine training. So Chip Smith is the founder of Competitive Ed Sports. Basically, he is one of the top coaches that helps athletes to prep for the Indianapolis Combine or their NFL Pro Days coming right out of college. A big part of his organization was looking at, they did a really good job in football, but they wanted to be able to scale into other businesses that were sports related using his training system. So we created a national certification using his training system more, movement over speed, reaction resistance, and we packaged that and presented it to Liberty University, which is the largest online platform for learning in college. And they created a certification that they scaled out to people that were graduate students. So that's one of the ways that we helped him take his, his business and scale it and, and make additional revenue and also make a bigger impact on what he was doing. We also were able to build a offshore medical facility for training and development with Chip, where players that were injured could go to a medical facility and training facility in Cat Island in the Bahamas and it literally allowed them to train and recover in paradise. And so these are the kinds of things that we have done over the last twenty years and we actually started working here in Clayton County this year. And that's one of the reasons that I was able to connect with Deputy Murkison, is because we actually offered a national Juco showcase at Morrow High School. So we were able to bring in over four hundred Division One and Division Two college coaches. We were bringing in over five hundred athletes that play in Juco or played internationally and they were at Clayton, at Morrow High School for four events. And literally those kids were able to get scholarships, they were able to come and experience this showcase atmosphere that we not only helped them with getting recruited, but helped them with life skills that would lead, hopefully lead them to success beyond the playing field. And so we also worked with the base, National Baseball Showcase at Morrow High School. So one of the things that, after looking at what the need was here in Clayton County, the thing that I realized that you do pretty good is the recreational program. You do provide great services on the recreational level. But the thing that I saw, that I was able to bring and see that there's more opportunity on, is bringing the championship level events to your community, making that impact. You know, giving the kids here opportunities to improve their skills and have a place to showcase them so they can get scholarships and do things. Bringing these events here that are going to impact the hotels, people are going to stay here, they're going to buy food, they're going to, you know, buy gas, they're going to, you know, make an economic impact on the local community. But there's some things that have to happen in order for that to occur. And it's fortunate that you built a hundred million dollar high school up there in, in Morrow because it was really, really compelling when the coaches came. They were like, this is better than my college, you know? They were saying things that, they were shocked. But that's the kind of thing that you got to do to attract these kinds of events, right? And so what we've done over the, over the last twenty years, we've, we'll come in and we'll look at something and we try not to look straight ahead. We go, okay, how can we make the most impact, the biggest impact, without disrupting what's currently going, but help whomever we're servicing, servicing get more value out of what they're currently, what they currently have, right? And so the thing that I propose is that you've got some good parks, they just need to be redeveloped. They need to be improved. And that's not all tax-based money that's needed for that. I've worked with companies like CBA Sports, they're a flooring and, you know, turf manufacturing company. We created a partnership with the Atlanta Hawks and we had over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of flooring that we put in, in parks and recs throughout Atlanta over a four-year span. And guess what? State Farm and Phillips and all those people sponsored that stuff and they basically were able to use those funds to construct new venues or improve new venues. And so that meant the existing park could reallocate some of the money they were going to use for capital expenditure and allocate it towards subsidy on scholarships or subsidizing some of the costs associated with participate for the local, the local constituents. And so things like that are things that need to be creatively thought about to not only serve and solve some of the recreational issues, but also bring some new experiences into Clayton County. And the thing that I see is, you know, people fly into Hartsville-Jackson and then they go north, right? But we got to give them reasons to stay south. We got to give, because people that flew in for the Juco event, they flew in and they came south and they loved it. They had no idea, they were like, man, where did this come from? Well, you know, they had been doing my event prior to this in, in DeKalb County, but I lost that venue and so I said, let's come down and do it in Morrow and they loved it. So if we give people more reasons, create more events, I, I think you can make a huge impact and you can create the, the revenue to support the more local, the local things. All right, I'm going to try to jump and finish this. I also think that, I kind of feel the vibe that things are changing and it's, and you guys are doing a great job of making changes and modernizing what's going to be today in the future in Clayton County. But I think also, you can attract some, you know, the goal is to attract not just events, but also to attract some of these companies and businesses that they're looking for a place to start their business in the metro Atlanta area. An example, ING Academy, they're a huge training organization for athletes and they're in Bradenton, Florida. They went down there when Bradenton was in absolute obscurity. There was nothing going on down there. And they said, we're going to take a tennis, we're going to build a tennis academy, we're going to put land around it and then we're going to get Nick Bolatieri to come in there, a tennis coach, and then he's going to be a celebrity coach, he's bringing Serena and Venus and Andre Agassi. And all of a sudden, it turned more into a real estate development than it was a training center, right? But you got to be able to draw and bring in those folks that say, wow, I can do it a little less expensive, with a lot less headache, I can do it down in Clayton County. So I think the ability to attract some folks to come in, and that's a lot of them out there, we just got to package and present so that they say, this is where they'd like to go. And then the last thing, there's a lot of opportunity in what's called the competitive social marketplace. And so what's happening is, some of the newer sports like pickleball are now very popular, right? And so who plays pickleball? You get these corporate leagues that come in, you get, you know, families, you get older, the, the older population, you get the folks that have the money that want to be a part of these things. So if you bring in those kind of events, not just the typical basketball, because these are not, you know, the folks that play basketball, me, we, we don't have no money. But soccer, volleyball, pickleball, lacrosse, these folks have the funds and they will spend the money, right? And so we got to, we got to do things, in my opinion, that get the corporations involved, do the things they want to do. If we provide services around sport, about socialization, about building engagement and experiences with corporations, what's going to happen is, they're going to fund it, right? They're going to want their employees to participate. And so I think building activities and activations and special events that engage the corporations and adults and doing it for engagement and entertainment, because there's a new concept called entertainment, okay? You create these events, but you make your money on the food and beverage, right? Make a lot more money on food and beverage. Well, guess what? But you got to have the events and the people that are consumers to actually, you know, spend that money. And so I believe that you're in a really good position here in Clayton County. You know, there's a lot of folks that talk to me, because I get a lot of calls and say, yo, I'm looking at Fulton or I'm looking in Gwinnett for some place to do something. And I'm like, good luck. It's expensive. It's tight and there's a lot of competition. But if you want to be in Atlanta, look south to I-20. Lots of opportunity, okay? And so I guess the goal and outcome of my, my, my time here And so I guess the goal and outcome of my, my, my time here was really to, just let you know that we're here to help, any way that we can bring value. We feel like you can call the athletic director, Chris Will Foye, over at Morrow High School, and ask him what kind of operation we run, if you want to understand what we do, because he was overwhelmed about the experience he had. But I believe we can help in many areas that you're looking for. And I don't know why I walked in today, and we were talking about recreation, but I feel like this is a good response to some of the challenges that you may be facing, because you gotta take care of the residents, right? But this may be a way to do it. And I listed in here some next steps and, and things like that, I won't get into that, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to help answer.
Okay, definitely thank you for this presentation. Are there any questions from Commissioner Hambrick?
What's your name again?
Robert Hannah.
Robert Hannah, Mr. Hannah.
Yes ma'am.
I, I believe you were here today and overheard the meeting we had, you know. We had a meeting with our Parks Director and Deputy Director, COO, DCOO, and who else was there? Anyway, we, we were talking about some things very similar. It's increasing and doing better things for our parks, particularly, you know, the one in my district. And we even mentioned the pocket parks, because we are gonna be doing pocket parks for each commissioned district, and we're actively looking in the northern part right now. And one of the things for the pocket park will be a pickleball field and whatever. And they don't know yet, but I was gonna say a skateboard, and, and just a number of things. But we have been talking with a young man who would like to become a member of our Parks and Rec Department. I don't know what that is right now, but anyway, but he's talking the same, you know, very similar things, not the backing and the, of the higher-ups, I guess you call it, the folk with the money. But as far as increasing the parks and all, and, and having specialties and all, and I think right now his specialty is with the baseball, you know, getting our kids back into playing baseball.
That's right.
You know, I've just been excited and to hear you saying, you know, similar kind of things, and just bringing it more on a national level. I mean, I, I feel good about that. So thank you so much for your presentation, and hopefully we can do something with, if not with that, with something in the same general area and all, and increasing our parks and increasing the activities of our kids, and starting them out, you know, young.
That's right.
And then building it up, you know, but especially getting them in some of the, you know, the soccer and the, actually to get them back into baseball.
Yeah.
You know, kids don't do baseball like they used to. I mean, that's the first thing we played when we were growing up, you know, we had the rock and a board.
I would've left that one alone. A rock and a board, okay.
Thank you, thank you so much for this, and hopefully we can continue the conversation and all that.
Yes ma'am. I'm here to help.
At least think about the part of Clayton County that touches the airport. As a matter of fact, most of the airport is in District Two, Mission District Two, so remember that.
Which is, which is Clayton County is what she's trying to say. Commissioner Anderson.
I just want to say thank you. We've had many conversations, and some of the best conversations is, as we were talking about Gwinnett and other places, how they have these exclusive, what is it, baseball events, you know, where they're, you know, they come in, they make all this money, and they have all these teams that come from everywhere. And our parents have just, have said, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, please just bring us a sports complex. Please bring us a baseball complex where we don't have to travel. And I have one parent, guys, that she will actually film the place. She films where she's at every time she needs to go. She calls me, I don't care if I'm at home, sleep, hey, I'm here, I'm in Gwinnett, I'm here, I'm in Swanee. Look at this, look at this, look at this. So I'm just excited because we have to do something different and innovative for our children and just for our community. And I think that you, I looked at your, looked at the Houston Amateur Sports Complex, which is sixty-nine acres, and it was back, built back in two thousand and nine, and it looks amazing. I just want to say you all did a great job with that. The Swani Sports Academy, you all have basketball, volleyball and soccer there. That, it looks excellent, so you know, I'm always looking stuff up, because I want to see who you are.
Of course.
And so, again, I just want to let you know, I think that you are gonna be a game changer. If you come into this community, we need to change the game. We need to up the ante and do what we need to do to bring in those eateries and those things that we need so we can move our county forward. So again, I'm excited, you know, come on, if you, if you can find those people to bring that money, then we can get it done.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
And I'm gonna echo the sentiment of my colleagues, great presentation, a lot of good information. Today, a matter of fact, our Office of Economic Development, Ms. Erica Rocker in the back, had a bus tour going around Clayton County showing these great sights. And I bring, bring that up to say, you are absolutely correct. Great opportunity here in Clayton County. And I appreciate you directing people south of I-20, but I need you to change your language a little bit. Don't say south of I-20, say I-20 in Clayton County. Because we do have great opportunity, and we are trying to do exactly what you just said. Bring a staple facility or, or business organization that's going to attract those ancillary businesses, that's going to support it, but also bring that revenue to our economy here in Clayton County, because we definitely will benefit by having those restaurants, those top-end hotels and so forth. So we're looking forward to exploring, where do we go from here with some of those ideas? Now, I'm not even gonna say that. So thank you for your presentation, and we look forward to furthering the conversation, because it sounds like my colleagues are excited about what they heard, and would probably want to hear some more about how we can further develop some of those ideas you talked about. So thank you so much.
And I just saw COO just walked back in, and he's talking some of the same kinds of things that the person that's interested in working for Parks and Rec was talking, you know, concentrating a lot on the, you know, training, really training the kids in the different sports and all, particularly baseball and all, so anyway.
Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you all for your time.
Alright, that was the last presentation on the evening, so we stand adjourned. Please have a good evening.